Good evening. Welcome to Grand Blank Township Board Meeting for Tuesday, June 9th. And I would invite our board and attendees to stand. Mr. Massey, can you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. And I'll ask for an approval of the agenda. Ms. Lane?
Mr. Chair, I would move that because of the limited agenda on Thursday night, that we cancel Thursday night's meeting because of the items we have discussed in previous meetings. And therefore, we can remove the agenda for tonight and consent agenda that was on the Thursday, June 11th meeting. Don't know if the agenda was corrected because Items B and D are repetitive statements for A and C.
Uh, Mr. Laddie, any thoughts?
No, that's correct. And by the way, if you decided you wanted to make tonight the action to do that, you wouldn't need to cancel your Thursday meeting. And I agree that we do have two second readings. First of all, of the tree protection ordinance is the first second reading ordinance. And then number two, you have the fire commission ordinance. And those who are listed, they're listed twice on the agenda. I don't know if that's just a mistake.
Okay. So B and C, you're saying could be deleted?
Correct.
B and D.
Oh, B and D. Okay.
Yes, sir.
That is correct.
Okay. Um, I've got everybody muted because we're getting a lot of static. Uh, Mr. Mansour?
Yeah, if we're gonna, if we are proposing to do this, I have one item of concern on the consent agenda, the financial activity recap.
Okay.
So if we want to do that, then I'd like to spend a minute to talk about it, please.
Okay. We'll make that, uh, make that Item F, Mr. Mansour. We'll make that Item F under operational. Uh, Mr. Guzak?
Mr. Chair, there must have been a change in the agenda because the one that I have, A and, B and D are not the same ones, they're different ones. So I must have not a current copy?
No, they're not identical. They're, they're not, you've got current copy. There was no change. They're not identical, but they say pretty much the same thing.
That's, that's a good, that's a correct statement.
Mr. Massey?
Yes. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move, I move that we have the Thursday meeting.
Well, there's a motion currently right now to go with just tonight's. So let's finish up on that one and see where it goes. And then we'll consider your motion, Mr. Massey. So, Ms. Lane?
I need to support, Mr. Chair.
I had support?
I, I don't know if anyone did.
Okay. With those changes, does anybody wish to support Ms. Lane's motion? Was there something you wanted to add to the agenda, Mr. Massey, for Thursday? Or was there something you wanted to discuss on here Thursday?
Mr. Chair, I believe that every meeting we have going forward in these times that we are in right now, we need a meeting. We don't need to council meetings because we are facing with things that we have never faced as a board before. So we need to stay on top of whatever is going on. Okay? So we don't know further what the governor may say in regard to continuation of staying home, what will be lifted. I haven't heard anything from her lately. So as leaders, we need to stay abreast of every opportunity that we have. So that's why I think we should have the meeting on Thursday.
All right. Well, there's been a motion and it's seconded. I guess, does anybody wish to second Ms. Lane's motion? I'm sorry? Mr. Guzak?
No, I didn't say anything.
Oh, okay. All right. So it is, then I guess, Ms. Lane, that motion fails for support. So...
Scott, can you hear me? I'm stuck there.
I'm sorry? Mr. Thomas?
I'll second it.
All right.
Just for discussion's sake.
Okay. So it's seconded by Mr. Thomas?
For discussion's sake.
Sure. Anybody wish to discuss the merits of us having a meeting on Thursday?
Yeah.
Mr. Thomas?
To you, Mr. Trustee Massey, do you, is there anything that we can add to the agenda to cover what you're saying for Thursday?
Well, I said, well, these meetings are very important because a lot of things have, have fallen through the crack and we have not been told a lot of things. So we need to have as many meetings that is on schedule for us to have. Because I'm afraid that we have missed a lot of opportunities. So going forward, I do not want the board to miss any opportunities.
Yeah, I just don't want to see anything become redundant. But I totally agree with you, Trustee Massey. I think there's a lot of things we have to look at, especially with the federal funding coming down and some other things. But can we, is there a way that we could do it? Maybe an executive session on Thursday or an executive session tomorrow?
Um, we would have to have a reason for the executive session, but, um, I don't see one right now that's on the agenda, but...
Okay.
Ms. Lane?
Unless someone is adding something more specific, saying we're going to meet and not have a specific item to discuss, doesn't seem appropriate at all. Start adding things to Thursday's agenda, even though it's late, if you're going to have a Thursday meeting. But to address the items as published in our packet, which are actually only four items, including Mr. Mansour's tonight, it's redundant.
I think, you know, one of the things we're going to do tonight is we'll have an up, I mean, if we, if we take on Thursday's agenda tonight, we will have an update on a number of things. I guess, you know, if there's something that, uh, that we aren't clear on at the end of the meeting, I guess, we could always schedule the meeting for Thursday. But, um, you know, I'm not sure what we're leaving out, you know, that, uh, any updates from the governor. We could always call a special meeting if, if the governor had some announcement that we needed to react to. But in terms of reacting to anything, I'm not sure what that might be, but...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Massey?
May I give you an example of something?
Oh, that's okay. I mean, I think, go ahead.
I think it was here, I think all of you guys heard me very clearly in the last meeting, when I asked for COVID-19 to be placed on the agenda. And you guys put the agenda together, decide, decided that you did not want that on the agenda. So you guys are deciding, there's a lot of things that we should be talking about right now, you decide to put a muzzle on those things. So we need to have our meetings to discuss those things.
Actually, Mr. Lima, in his written report, has an update on the COVID-19 with regard to the township that was in the packet that was sent out.
Well, we need a meeting on Thursday.
Does anybody wish to amend the agenda for this evening? Is there a motion to, uh, to move forward with the agenda?
We need to vote on the original motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right. I didn't think, I guess, Mr. Lane, Mr. Thomas did second it. So, uh, Ms. Lane, you want to call for the vote?
Mr. Mans, so what's, I'm sorry, what's the motion that's out there?
Ms. Lane's, go ahead, Ms. Lane.
That we would cancel Thursday night's meeting and we would deal with the four items that are on the agenda tonight, which are the two repeal ordinances, the road agreement, and Mr. Mansour's question about the accounts payable.
Oh, could you do that after you went through the whole agenda like Supervisor mentioned? That way, we can see if everything's clear and there's no, any problems.
Well, let's vote on this, on this motion. But, Mr. Mansour?
So if I could, could I offer an amendment to the motion, just saying that we're going to approve the agenda as written, but add an item, maybe under future agenda items, that just says, you know, confirm meeting need for June 11th meeting?
Put that under what? I'm sorry, Mr. Mansour?
Yeah, just, just, just make that, make that the last item on the agenda.
Okay.
And before adjournment.
Mr. Laddie?
If you're gonna do that, then that would be fine. But then, will you be taking action on the, on all of the items on Thursday night, tonight?
No, it's a good point.
Yeah.
It's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Good point.
I'm sorry. Okay, so I withdraw the amendment.
Okay. All right, Ms. Lane?
Mr. Mansour?
I'm, I'm sorry, one more time, is this a motion to eliminate the Thursday meeting?
To eliminate the Thursday meeting and add as an operational item your request for the treasurer's accounts payable item.
And to add Thursday's agenda to tonight's agenda, correct, Ms. Lane?
Correct.
Yeah. So, um, I'll, I'm gonna, I'm gonna decline on this one. No.
Okay, Mr. Thomas?
I'm gonna support Trustee Massey, vote no.
Mr. Atkins?
No.
Mr. Guzak?
No.
Mr. Massey?
No.
I'll vote yes, Mr. Supervisor.
Oh, you know, it, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other. If you guys want to have a meeting Thursday, we'll, we'll go with Thursday, so...
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
Okay. So with that, um, let's move on to, uh...
Well, then we should just, as the chair...
Yes.
We should have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's committee of the whole meeting.
Okay. Do we have a motion to amend tonight's committee of the whole? I mean, to, to, to approve?
And also, that includes on the Thursday night agenda, the, the item that Mr. Mansour wanted, correct?
Well, we might be able to clear that up tonight as we go through the Thursday agenda, so let's wait and see.
Correct.
Yep. Okay. So there is a motion to, I believe there is a motion...
I'm support.
Okay. The motion in support, Ms. Lane?
Okay. Mr. Mansour?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yep.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Guzak?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
As-sell, Mr., yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I'm going to see if there's any public comment. Let me just, uh, open the phone lines here. Is there anybody that wishes to make a public comment? Is there anybody on, on the line that wishes to make a public comment? Okay. Seeing none, uh, we will close public comment and bring it back to our board. Let me just take care of something. Okay. With that, we're going to now review the Township Board Agenda for our meeting, our board meeting for June 11th. And we will have approval of the minutes. And then on the consent agenda, we have treasurer's financial activity. I believe Mr. Mansour had a question with regard to that.
Yep. So, uh, the question I had on this, I think there's some background noise, but...
I'm going to go ahead and mute, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go ahead and mute everybody. If I, if you need to call my attention to unmute, you raise your hand or something, unless you want to just unmute yourself, okay? But we'll eliminate the background noise that way. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Mansour.
Okay. So, uh, there are two, two items. First, I think we talked about last time we had our study session about an increase of $50,000 to the parks and rec budget to handle maintenance. And I didn't see that in the, uh, in the financial report that was attached. Uh, and that was the first thing. And then the second thing was, um, I just had a question about whether we were expecting that we would have inspection fees go down, um, over the course of the year, just based on, you know, lower, um, you know, maybe COVID, other related, uh, factors.
Mr. Lima?
I'm sure the $50,000 wouldn't appear in the financial reports. The board approved an expenditure for maintenance. The miller's language allows the maintenance of the parks. So the, when they expend the funds for that maintenance, you guys would be approving those funds as they expand and the line item will be coming out of the millage funds.
Okay. So there's, there's no front-loading of it, applying the maintenance and then, um, taking it down as we spend it?
We can, I mean, if you'd rather see, again, the miller's question allows for us to spend the money for maintenance of the parks, so it doesn't necessarily have to move if the board would prefer to do that. Trustee Mansour, we can certainly do that for you.
Let me just offer that it just kind of shows in a bookkeeping way that we're applying funds to this, um, you know, and a, you know, and from a budgetary standpoint. That was, that was the only reason. Thank you.
Okay. What was your other question, Mr. Mansour?
It, it had to, it had to do with expectations around inspection fees. I think we had, uh, pretty much inspection fees loaded into the budget, assuming kind of business as usual. And I'm just wondering, you know, maybe now isn't the exact time, but if we can take a look at, at what our expectations are because of the lower business activity, if that would have an impact there. That was it. Thank you.
Point of clarification. Um, Trustee Mansour, are you talking about the inspection fees for the building department?
Exactly right. Exactly right.
Okay. I'll have Mark Lloyd, and I know he's on tonight, but I'll have him send a report out to the board on what he anticipates based on losing a couple of months of the construction season.
Maybe it'll be made up, I don't know, but thank you.
Okay. Mr. Massey?
Uh, I've gotten some complaints that the parks haven't been manicured as it has been in the past. What causes that problem?
Mr. Lima, any comment?
I'm unaware that there's any difference in the maintenance of the parks. I know that, um, we didn't have everybody hired because of the COVID-19 and we were just running the minimal crew. He did just add his additional seasonal people on there, so that could be the biggest difference.
Well, let me ask the question. Since you're unaware, how often do you get a report from the director of the parks or anyone?
His report is actually...
I tell them to those guys on a daily basis.
But if you, if you get a report from those guys on a daily basis, you should have known that. Because everybody's complaining about it that visits the parks. Oh, the parks are not cut, the grass is not cut. So you're not getting that report and I'm getting the report? That disconnect somewhere.
Actually, there is a report in the packet.
Because those complaints aren't coming to me, so there is a disconnect. I'm not aware of any complaints about the park being cut. And in fact, I've seen the director out there cutting grass late on Saturday afternoons and evenings. So I know the grass is getting cut. I'm not aware of any reports at all, Trustee Massey. And if you do get those reports, you should send them along so that we have the ability to follow up on them.
And actually, actually, I have received, actually, compliments with regard to the park. And there is a report in the packet from our park director. So take a look at the park, at the packet that you received on Friday for the board. And, uh, you have, have the ability to ask Mr. Lima to advance if that report from that department director is not thorough enough. Ask on Friday or over the weekend or Monday to have something clarified. And I'm sure that the department head can clarify that. But actually, I have received, uh, several accolades on some of the work that we've been doing out there, actually. Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Furthermore, since the superintendent is blind to the fact...
Okay, I'm not going to, I'm not going to allow for disparaging remarks. If you have something, Mr. Uh...
Well, I said, since the superintendent is blind to the fact, I was out in the park. That's reading my note. I was out there.
All right. Well, then you need to report those things independently to our park director or to Mr. Lima.
So we don't need all the help we got that we paying these big salaries to them.
Okay. All right. So anyways, moving on, uh, Mr. Mansour will get a report with regard to the fees. Next item on Thursday's agenda will be the second reading of the, uh, reading of an ordinance to repeal Article 4, Sections 14 dot 80 through 14 point 92 of the tree protection ordinance. Uh, Mr. Laddie?
Thank you. Uh, this ordinance is the same as it was last week, except that one important detail, we've added both the Sections 14 80 to 14 92 and also the corresponding MUNICO Sections, which would be 2300 to 2315, of the ordinance that was originally adopted in 2005. And then we've, again, and this may be redundant, we've, we've added Sections 2300 to 2315 of the amendment that was adopted in 2016. And that is just to cover, uh, the internal numbering that we have here in the township and to make sure that we've included also the renumbering that MUNICO does. Other than that, the ordinance is exactly the same as it was last time we visited this.
Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Mansour?
Thank you. Uh, so we're talking about here, and by the way, I, I have read through this a number of times and fully support that we repeal this, uh, tree, the general municipal tree protection ordinance. However, uh, when we talked about this last time, uh, we asked, um, Director Lloyd if he would go through and see if there were some elements of it that maybe should be carried over into the zoning ordinance or that we could propose to carry over into the zoning ordinance. And in looking, in looking at it, there were two areas that, um, that I would like to have some consideration, maybe. And that was having to do with section, basically Section 14 dash 80, 14 dash 81, which is the findings about why we have tree ordinances. I think it's a good one because it does refer back to the, uh, the Michigan State Environmental Protection Act.
Mark Lloyd, just Mark.
It does talk about, uh, in a little bit more specificity than the existing initial paragraph about the value of trees. So I would, I would propose, um, uh, well, I'd propose us taking a look and including that in the, uh, through the zoning ordinance to potentially put it in. And the second item has to do with historic trees. I don't know if Director Lloyd has a, has a comment on this, but we, in the existing municipal code, we talk about historic tree designation. And I wonder if there is some desire to include that in the zoning ordinance as well. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Lloyd, would you care to comment?
Hello, I, I see that, uh, the idea of...
Mr. Lloyd, I, we can't hear you. Mr. Lloyd?
I'm here.
We're having trouble hearing you.
Sorry.
Tell you what, Mr. Lloyd, let me call you real quick and we will put you on the phone here. Just a moment.
Hello? Come on, buddy, just a minute. There you go.
I'm gonna mute all of them. Okay, I'm gonna put you on speaker, Mark.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Lloyd?
Hi, everybody. Yeah, I'm back there now. You can hear me well enough. Um, yeah, what I do want to say is I don't disagree with the idea of incorporating certain provisions of this into the zoning ordinance. It, it makes good sense. Uh, Mr. Mansour is on target with that. And I think, without question, the historic trees need to be identified and, you know, continued, I would suggest, to somehow find some degree of protection. Uh, so I do believe that those are good things to pull out and to communicate with the commission about and see how we go about doing that. I think there's potentially going to be, you know, community interest in the historic tree provision for sure. You know, that's a little bit more of a community-wide issue than, you know, some of these properties that have got third, fourth, and fifth growth trees on them.
Thank you.
Okay. So the Planning Commission can look at those at any time and figure out what you want to add to the general...
I'm so sorry, but if I could say this, if, if you guys don't mind, and Dennis, I don't want to jump in too far on this, you help me if I'm straggling a little bit. If you guys want to just give me direction as a body to have, to have the Planning Commission work with it, that's kind of the way that would be great. I, I, or some consensus of the group, that's great, guys.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd.
Sure thing.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions with regard to the tree protection ordinance? So, Mr. Laddie, where do we go from here on this particular, uh, rescission?
We're, we're queued up. And Thursday night, if you decide to, to adopt the second reading of the ordinance, you're peeling it, then it will be, it will take effect upon publication. And it will be, uh, gone off the books of the, of the general ordinances and then we'll be relying on our existing regulations in the zoning ordinance. Um, and again, subject to any amendments that Mr. Mansour and Mr. Lloyd just spoke.
Okay. Thank you. So we've determined that Item B is, is repetitious, so we can skip down to Item C. And the board will consider a motion to accept as a second reading an ordinance to repeal the Grand Blank Fire Commission. Uh, Mr. Laddie?
Again, this, uh, there's no change to this ordinance. Uh, when we adopted, we, we, several, and we met, and the first was to accept the final audit of the, uh, the YOY produce regarding fire commission and the distribution of assets. And final piece of the puzzle on our end is to repeal the ordinance that amended the original joint ordinance of the city and township. And so this is our second reading. There isn't any change in circumstance, at least on our end, since the last time we, um, viewed this and took action on it. The one thing I was trying to do, just as, as, as you were speaking earlier, is trying to find out if the city, in fact, adopted, uh, the, the audit findings of YOY. And I, I don't have any information to indicate that they did or they didn't. My thought was that they did meet, um, since the time that we accepted it. Um, so unfortunately, I don't have that piece of information to give. But frankly, um, we're gonna move forward with our end and wrap things up on our side.
Okay. Mr. Guzak?
Yeah, I just had a question for Mr. Laddie. A couple of things. The, uh, I noticed that the, uh, the QuickBooks is not included here, and I know we had to do that. Is there a provision in there so that we can get paid back for part, for the QuickBooks on our percentage?
Well, what, I, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what, what, what the Quick, uh, the QuickBooks, what it, what it is, it's, it's a system that was needed by the fire commission to establish all the records and to keep it continuing as long as it was established. And it has to continue until it's completely dissolved. However, the, the fees have been paid through the general fund, uh, and so I don't think they're in there. Uh, so there's a concern, a concern there. There's about approximately $2,000 worth of fees.
Uh, so I don't know if we can just address that to say we can look at that, uh, when we, before they use the final check writing?
No, we're, we're, no. So what we did, that YOY audit accounted for all of the assets of the, of the Joint Fire Commission. And if we have, if we have operational expenses, including a QuickBooks compartment on our side, for our own financing purposes, that is not included.
Well, well, it wasn't our purposes, it was the fire commission's purposes. We can keep track of it on our own system, but they had to maintain it because they were separate entities.
Yeah. Here, I did speak with Chief Burdette with regard to this issue. And, uh, the QuickBooks allows us to have a look back. If we cancel the subscription, we do not, we lose the history immediately. It, uh, it's a subscription basis, this QuickBooks. I think it's like $130 a month. I think it's like a hundred and thirty dollars a month or something, a hundred and forty dollars a month?
No, act, yeah, actually, it's seventy dollars every two weeks.
Okay, so a hundred and forty dollars a month. So, the bottom line is, um, I, I believe that we felt it was important for us to retain the history of this, so if we have any questions, we can look back at, uh, how things were transacted, and, um, I believe it's in our best interest to, to still have access to those records.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great point. Isn't there any way that we can actually print all the documents so we don't have to keep subscribing to continue on? I mean, we might need this two years from now, so are we gonna keep it going for two years?
Well, maybe we can figure out a way to switch it over. Mr. Laddie?
I, I would suggest, I mean, if you gotta, if you wanna do that for posterity's sake, your own records, keep it going for as long as you want, but it, it isn't gonna be of any value to the dissolution of the Fire Commission moving forward. So, there, I mean, it would, if we decide that it's important to us to have those records, then we're gonna be paying for those, and that will be your decision.
Um, I believe Ken might have his hand up down there. Mr. Thomas? I guess not.
Well, I, I, I agree with Attorney Laddie, that's, I, I just don't think we should waste that kind of money per month, but that's where I stand. Thank you.
Well, I think until we dissolve it, I think we need to keep it, uh, until we formally dissolve it. Mr. Limata, uh, I'm sure you have some information on this as well, right?
Yeah, I mean, we had to have it because they wouldn't be able to do the audit without QuickBooks, so we needed to maintain it until the audit was completed. Um, as far as moving forward, do we need access to QuickBooks? I don't believe so. We made the conversion, it's just to get through the closeout, and then I think we eliminate it.
Mr. Guzak?
So, the question was, it was needed for the Fire Commission, so all along, the Fire Commission should've been paying it, not Grand Blank Township.
Right? There is no provision in the final audit for the, for the allocation of that asset.
Okay, then, okay, then I just have one other question. Um, I know that, there, that heavy, uh, rescue truck, I know there's been a lot of discussion about this, I mean, we could never get a firm number on it, and we asked the city to sell it, uh, and they decided not to sell it, and I don't think it's been sold yet because no one had title to it except for the Fire Commission, and they haven't sold it, and I don't think we wanna retain it, but is there a clause that we can put in there that say, uh, whatever that's sold for, the city will get their twenty percent of whatever it's sold for, 'cause right now, I think it's an estimate, and I don't think, 'cause I don't believe it's sold. I could be wrong.
Mr. Laddie, can you explain how that's gonna work?
Yeah, financially, well, that's our asset. And so, what we did at our last meeting was we, we adopted a resolution, and that was adopted by the Fire Commission, that will not only divvy up the money in the accounts, but will also effectuate the transfer of all the equipment, including vehicles. That vehicle will be transferred from the Fire Commission, from its chairman, to the township, but we have already paid, we, in, in the transfer of those accounts, we've already paid for that fire truck. That's ours to sell for whatever price we wanna sell it for.
Your, go ahead, Mr. Guzak.
I'm sorry, so what, so what did we actually pay for that truck? I guess that's my bottom line.
We paid, we paid the value of, that the appraisers put on that truck.
Which was how much?
Oh, boy. Uh, I can, that up...
You can, you can bring that up on Thursday, I guess. That would just might, 'cause I, you know, the value on that thing, I know we've sold lots of trucks, and it usually doesn't come anywhere near the value, so maybe you can get a number by Thursday.
I can do that.
Okay, great.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Guzak. Okay, any other questions with regard to the, uh, audit, the, uh, second reading with regard to the, uh, repeal of the Grand Blank Fire Commission?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Massey.
I have a concern.
Go ahead.
My concern is, if we're carrying something that we have to pay for...
In terms of what? What, what item are you talking specifically? The truck?
Someone mentioned the item that we would be carrying, if we carrying it, we would have to pay for.
Oh, it was the, the QuickBooks, is that what you're referring to, Mr. Massey?
Yeah, the Quick, the QuickBooks.
Yeah, I think we pretty much agreed that we can cancel that as soon as we approve the audit. We, we just need to make sure we approve the audit, 'cause we lose the history once we cancel it.
Here's the point I'm trying to make. When we start talking, speaking about individual items, we forget about the deficit that we may be facing. So, we, we, we don't think about the deficit that we may be facing until someone mentioning it in a different, a different way, but when we're looking at other items, whoa, they're just fine to carry these items, uh, the QuickBook and pay extra money for it. So, why should we pay extra money for something when we may be looking at a deficit and we're gonna be making cuts? Hopefully, we will not have to do that.
Well, I think we, we pretty much agreed, Mr. Massey, that we are going to, uh, be able to drop the QuickBooks, uh, and Mr. Laddie, Mr. Limata, I believe Chief Perdott are all in agreement that we can cancel that, uh, once we approve the audit, but we wanna make sure the audit's approved before we drop it. Mr. Laddie?
We've approved the audit. The only question in my mind is whether the city has it.
Okay.
At our last meeting.
So, once we confirm, the city, they meet tomorrow, actually. Once we confirm that the city has approved it, then we can cancel the hundred and forty dollars or seventy dollars every two-week subscription.
Yeah, I mean, I, we may, and I, again, I'm sympathetic to the, to the point that Mr. Massey's making, but we might let that run two weeks longer. I, I don't expect any problem, but we've got, so after the city adopts the audit and accepts a resolution that divides the money, uh, still, we have Chief Perdott needs to go around and cancel all the accounts except one and then write two checks, so we have, if that takes two weeks, and we wanna have the QuickBooks there in case everything blows up, then I guess that would be a decision we can make.
Okay. Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, uh, I'd like to, uh, direct this question to the attorney. Not a question, but basically a comment. Based on what the attorney said...
Go ahead.
...I'd be willing to go for two months to make sure that everything clears.
Or what about if we just play it by ear and let Mr. Laddie handle it?
A good thought. I, I like that idea.
Okay. Alright. Okay. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and the board will consider a motion to approve the, uh, road construction agreements for Cook Road, Belsey Road, and Reed Road with the Genesee County Road Commission for a total of a hundred and eighteen thousand, eight sixty-six and ninety-three cents. Authorized Township Supervisor to execute all related contracts and agreements. I just wanna make a couple of points here. One is that, uh, we were very fortunate, um, to have Consumers Energy step forward, uh, in the past month or two and offer to pave a number of roads, and these are roads that have been consistently at the top of the complaint list for our residents. I know a number of you, uh, know that Cook Road has been an issue. Um, you've seen that Cook Road from Fenton Road to where the Roundabout, um, is going to be built this summer, uh, that's been paved, and that was paid for by Consumers Energy. Also, we have a number of other, I think somebody's phone is ringing there. Uh, we have a number of other, uh, projects that are listed, but in total, you know, the Genesee County Road Commission's paying, usually this is a fifty-fifty split, but because we're able to use CDBG funds, uh, there, the road commission is actually putting in close to three hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven to be exact, and the township is only having to put in a hundred and eighteen thousand to get all these roads done. Uh, one of the, the projects that I know has been a, and I know Mr. Massey's, uh, said that he's gone through plenty of tire align, wheel alignments, what have you, is on the, um, with regard to Cook Road near Embry at the, um, underpass. Um, they came to us light and said there's a way that we can get that done, we can slide it in, and, uh, we wanna get that done because it is pitiful, the shape that that's in. So, they, they have the crews out there because of doing Cook Road and doing all the work in the township. So, it looks like, uh, with, if we approve this, uh, this week, actually, we can, uh, move forward on, on getting these done immediately. Otherwise, that underpass, what they told us, if we don't do it right now, that is not gonna get done for a couple of years. I see, uh, did Mr. Atkins have his hand up first, or... Mr. Atkins, do you have your hand up?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
No, just, uh, yeah, I applaud the fact of getting the, uh, getting that taken care of under the overpass. That's definitely, uh, a great addition. I think that finishes out Cook, the, the major, uh, issues there pretty well, so I'm really happy that that's going to be, uh, added to this project.
Um, the other road that probably most of you don't travel on a regular basis is Pollock Road. Um, for the last several years, we had just numerous complaints. In fact, we had quite a few people attend our, our board meeting, uh, because of that road. It, it is the road that goes from McWayne down to Genesis. Actually, uh, the second half of that was, uh, paved in the last couple of weeks, um, and they're getting ready for, uh, the Consumers Pipeline to come through there. So, um, the rest of the county, I'm sure, is, uh, looking at the road products, projects in Grand Blank Township, and, uh, they're, they're seeing lots of orange barrels out here compared to their areas, so... Mr. Massey?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment about, uh, repairing the roads.
Go ahead.
And you know what, and, and you've heard me say something along these lines before in our subcommittee meeting.
Yes.
And you'd like for me to speak on this as boldly as I am.
Alright.
All of the things that you guys told us, how the roads would be prepared, that was a bunch of baloney. Now, let me tell you why it's a bunch of baloney. I called the trustees, and I told them to pay attention to how they're repairing Cook Road. They did not repair Cook Road, Cook Road as you guys told us. You guys didn't, uh, you know, throw you in because you have direct contact with the, uh, with the road commissioner. They did not repair that road as you had explained to the board. Not you per se, as the road commissioner had explained, had explained to the board.
What was that, Mr. Massey? I'm not familiar with what they told us that, uh, they were going to do to that road.
Well, let me tell you. Uh, I had started telling the, the, uh, my constituencies in the township, be prepared. The road's gonna be, uh, torn up for about a month, and, uh, if it had not rained, the road would've been completed within a week. Okay? You guys told us all of this process, and I'm not referring to you, I'm talking about the road commission.
Okay. Alright. Well, number, yeah...
They did not use that process that they come to the board and explain and that you guys carry over to us. Uh, that, that's just the way it is.
Yeah. Well, I, I appreciate, you know, that, I, I really don't understand, but, um, because really, they, I don't recall them telling us how they were going to do it, but what I am pleased with is they put three inches of asphalt on top of that road. Um, three inches is, uh, about the max, I think, for what they do over top of, uh, a road. Um, I've seen them do substantially less, but, uh, they also did a superb job of the, uh, gravel on the edges, but, um, you know, and, I guess, you know, it, it was kind of a negotiated deal with, uh, consumers, and we were the beneficiary because consumers came forward and said they would pay to, uh, have that paved. Uh, the other sec, the other section of Cook Road between Embry and Holly Road, when that is done, uh, they're telling us that that has been repaved too many times. I'm, I'm having to believe that probably Cook Road from Embry to Fenton Road probably remained dirt or gravel, um, for a much longer period of time than Embry to Holly Road. That's part of the problem with the underpass, is that, uh, they have to actually grind out what is existing road there, uh, because the road bed underneath it is pretty much just, uh, gravel. Uh, there, there really, you know, when they converted that from a gravel road to paved, there wasn't a whole lot done to it to prepare it. But, uh, Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I've been here for longer than eighteen years.
Yes.
I don't ever recall them parent, repairing from Embry to, uh, Holly Road, a thorough repair.
Right.
It's always, it's, it has always been patches to my knowledge.
Yeah. I, I agree. However, what they've told us is that they, if they, when they redo Cook Road from Embry to Holly, it's going to be a total rebuild, is what they're saying, and partly because, if you notice, the road, what they told us anyways, is that the road is so much higher than the property, you know, adjoining the, that road, partly because of all the buildup of asphalt and gravel shoulders, that, uh, it's, it's made, it crowned the road so high that it's, you know, you know, two feet or whatever higher than the base of the houses along there. So, they claim that when they do that, it's going to be where they have to actually dig out the road and redo it. So, the bottom line is that we're getting, uh, quite a few roads done that, uh, that we've needed to have done, and we're, we're doing it for a lot less money than what, uh, the fifty-fifty would call for, so a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars on our part and two hundred and seventy-one thousand on theirs. Mr. Limata, any comments, uh, with regard to, uh, the road projects?
Yeah, the, the one thing I would say is that, uh, you know, we are relatively lucky. I appreciate bringing up consumers, 'cause they're gonna spend a couple million dollars fixing some roads that we otherwise wouldn't have got to. The other thing is that the roads that are getting fixed have PISA ratings of two, which is very poor, or three, which is poor. So, again, we're fixing some sections of roads, not all of them, but we're fixing some sections of roads that are the most desperate need of it. Uh, and then because of the use of the CDBG funds this year, we actually ended up with, uh, we had a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars budgeted for our fifty-fifty allocation, but we always spent a hundred and eighteen thousand. We're actually reserving some money in a year that, um, Mark knows we could use the, uh, the money to not have to be spent, so, uh, I feel really good about that, and I think it just gave it a really good time for us.
Uh, Mr. Sears, uh, I think you're on the line, right, Mr. Sears?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Sears, uh, is there any, I know one of, we had a resident that messaged me and wanted to know if, uh, we, uh, had any kind of timeline on the subdivisions that, uh, were being paid.
Yeah, so we have, um, two subdivisions up for repave this year. One is Grandville Estates, which is in the design process right now, and that'll more than likely be, um, paved in early fall. And then we also have Grand Blank Estates, which is, at the end of the design process, it should be, uh, going out for bid shortly, and hopefully, we can get started on that in maybe, uh, early July to late July, and, uh, get those both wrapped up by the end of fall.
Okay. Very good. I know those residents, uh, are looking forward to getting those roads paid, according to, uh, the messages I'm getting, so, thanks, uh, for helping answer that question.
Absolutely.
Okay, anything else with regard to streets and roads?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Massey.
I have a comment, and I think it's worth mentioning, because you guys got the wrong information about me. The superintendent, Dennis Lindman, texted me. He and our director just told me the only reason that some areas are not mowed is because the rain causes wet areas. Now, the only reason I'm mentioning this, when I said I was in the parks, in the park, and I saw that there was areas, I saw that the park had not been mowed, and the superintendent said I was full of BS, basically. So, I just wanted to make it clear that I was out there. I knew what I was talking about. The superintendent had no idea what he was talking about.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Limata?
I'm sorry, that's just such a mischaracterization. I never said anything like that. I said I wasn't aware of any issues. No complaints have come in. The information I shared with you is what the Parks and Rec Director, Patrick Blinningham, sent to me immediately after hearing your comments, so that you have an answer. There is, we have multiple ways to let us know if there's an operational issue. We have a complaint form that's on our website. If we don't hear about, if you hear any complaints, whether it's about Parks and Rec, or anything else, and you don't encourage those people to let us know operationally, there's no way we can address that. I would've had the answer for you tonight, had that come to me sooner. I gave it to you the minute I got it, which was right after we spoke. Patrick sent it to me, and I forwarded it to you, Trusty Massey, but I never characterized you as being full of BS. I wanna be very clear about that.
The other thing that I would like to, to, to make clear is that one of the reasons why we actually, uh, send out board reports from different departments is if you have questions or the report isn't thorough enough, um, please communicate with Mr. Limata or myself and say, hey, you know what, that report from DPW or the Fire Department or Parks and Rec, um, we need some more clarification, so that when we come to these meetings, if, if there's something that, that isn't being addressed in that report, we can have that answer for you. So, uh, keep that in mind as well. Alright, so, that answers the questions on, on the road. All right, so that answers the questions on the road, I believe, unless anybody else has any road concerns. With that, we, we have future agenda items.
Another thing about the Parks and Recs, or the Parks with the, talking about the mowing, don't forget, we only had two guys mowing, you know, the beginning of the season too. And I think it's only been the last couple of weeks when we, or last week, when we finally get a full crew. So I mean, for two guys, I think they did a pretty good job, but I'm sure that there was something missed, and you're right. But the park, I've got a lot, a lot of accolades about the park in the last couple, last week or so, so.
All right, Mr. Thomas, thank you. Mr. Atkins?
Can you hear me, Scott?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, I was, I thought I seen this a while back. I'm not sure, but I think maybe a powerful tool. Is there anything we have that can show, like, how many miles of road we've repaved, or how many miles of road are in the works to be repaid versus the dollar amount? I think sometimes maybe, I think both is good, because a dollar show the investment, but, but maybe the actual amount of road could be something powerful on our website or something.
Sure, we can do that. Shouldn't be a problem. One of the things, too, that I know that Mr. Linehan, our Parks Director, and Mr. Limata and myself have been talking quite a bit about parks, and I think we're going to want to schedule a subcommittee meeting in the next several weeks. I know Mr. Linehan's been working on a number of items with regard to that, that he believes that we could move forward on, and we want to have the committee take a look at some of those plans and weigh in on it. So you'll probably be getting a call from one of us to, or email, asking to set up a meeting time within the next couple of weeks, I believe. With that, we'll move to board, well, we'll move, I guess, to the board reports. If we want to do those, Thursday, we can do that. Mr. Limata, anything that you want to report this evening?
No, the board has my written superintendent's report as part of the committee of the whole. If you have any questions that anybody has, if you have additional questions before Thursday that you would like me to research and provide information for, please email, give me a call, shoot me a text, whichever, however you prefer to get ahold of me, and let me know, and I will provide the information for you.
Okay. And I'll give my report on Thursday as well. Mr. Massey?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Will we have the meeting on Thursday at the town hall?
Which meeting is that? Which meeting are you referring to?
The board meeting.
Oh, when we have it, Thursday?
Will we have, the meeting that we're going to have Thursday-
Okay.
-at the town hall.
Right now, the governor's executive order still requires us to have 10 or less people in the room. And so with, with our board and attendees, we will supersede that. I believe, hopefully, by the end, by the fourth Tuesday, I'm hoping that we can have a meeting here physically in the township hall. Mr. Atkins?
Yeah, maybe this would be a question maybe for Mr. Laddie, or maybe Mr. Limata, either one. You know, now that, now, you know, this is coming up a lot at employers, right? So now that we have the ability, even though there's still a lot of bugs to be worked out, to do meetings remotely, does this change the scope of any committee meetings or any government meetings going forward if a member, does it create flexibility for elected people to, to call in and still have a relevant vote going forward?
Mr. Laddie?
My, my opinion on that would be, we'll be able to go back to, we will be required to go back to having our regular meetings at a regular meeting place, which would be the township hall. There is a, an attorney general opinion that precedes the COVID executive orders that says that remote, people could participate remotely in various meetings. And in fact, the DDA set it up their bylaws to do that, but the caveat to that is that you want to have, you need to have a majority or a quorum of the members present as your regular meeting site. And if, if you decide as a board, as a matter of procedure, to allow those that can attend, as long as you have that quorum, to participate electronically, you can do that, but that is totally up to you. And I'm going to defer to Dennis if he has any additional information on the topic.
Mr. Limata?
So this has been a very interesting topic of discussion, especially amongst the MTA, the MML, and the Michigan Association of Counties. One of the things that we found is that, that most municipalities have learned, I'd spend it with a few bumps and bruises, but we've learned that we can conduct these meetings electronically and conduct them, you know, very professionally and well, and conduct business. So there has been a little push back at the legislature to ask them if they would take a look at that, maybe soften those rules, like Mr. Laddie said, where we would be able to have electronic participation. It could work really good for especially meetings like the DDA or other, you know, even planning commission or those meetings, and even the township board meetings, if you have to be out of town for some reason and being able to remote in and attend a meeting, so that we can have the full benefit of having all of the board or committee members present, has been very positively, you know, received by a group of municipalities. It really is going to go, you know, see if we can put a little pressure through lobbying through our, our organizations like MTA, if they'll allow us to do so.
Mr. Atkins?
Is this something then to learn, you know, if there's some, some opinions out there, it sounds like, should we, is it premature to think about some sort of a remote policy or procedure, or start to put some language to paper and continue discussions around that?
Mr. Laddie?
I think that's a good idea. I'm happy to participate in that direction that you choose to go.
Okay. Yeah, I think, you know, one, from my perspective, you know, one of the things that, even with the DDA, where we put it in the bylaws, there's some technology things I'd like to see us do where, actually, we have PEG funds that can only be spent on things like this, but I'd like to see us use something in our, our conference room, for example, where we have the DDA meetings, that would allow the remote, the person that's attending remotely, that they would be able to see the entire group, and we would be able to see them on the monitor at the end of the room. So, you know, I'm sure most of you've seen in, you know, businesses and schools where they've got the camera mounted on the, the large screen at the end of the room, just so that you feel like the person's in the room. So there's some upgrades like that that I'd like to see happen in our conference room, but also our board room, we'll have to figure out how we could make that happen, so that if one of our board members is attending remotely, or a guest that we want to speak, that, you know, they're, they're visible to us and vice versa. So, but great discussion item, Mr. Atkins, and I think Mr. Laddie can probably start looking at some possible language for something like that, some options for us to consider. I know Mr. Limata's been in on a lot of webinars and what have you with MTA and MML that I'm sure has discussed this item at length, so let's put that on for a future agenda item, and we'll take a look at the language that you're able to draft, Mr. Laddie.
Okay.
Okay, I guess we'll wait till Thursday to give our, our reports for our various committees. Unless anybody else has something that I missed, I'd make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting, and we'll see everybody back on Thursday. Okay, support by Mr. Mansour. Ms. Lane, you'd like to do the roll call vote?
Mr. Mansour?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Guzak?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll see everyone at 7 o'clock on Thursday. Thanks.
Bye.
Good night.